To salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, which stands one nation, under God, equal and just. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Yeah.
Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Mayor Leahy?
Here.
Seven present.
Next, we have special order of business. Tonight, we had spotlight on excellence and recognition of the 2020-21 Lowell Public School retirees. Earlier tonight, we had a small ceremony in the mayor's reception room to hand out citations and to congratulate people and congratulate them on their retirement. We have a few representatives here with us, stayed for the meeting, and last year, you know, with COVID, we didn't get quite the celebration we wanted to. But this year, we had a nice reception for everybody. And we have a list of names to read of all the retirees. So I'll hand that over to Ms. Turner, and you can go down the list. Thank you.
The list includes all district staff that have retired, including central office people. We have Billy Casey, William Florence, Eric Gordon, Mary Lou LaPonte, Lisa Walsh, Paula Savigny, Viata Tith, Michael Moretti, Carol Rushton, Paula Robinson, Paul Kriegen, Charles Sullivan, Donna Murphy, Donna Delaire, Linda Hunter, Karen Silva, Susan Canelis, Nancy Facet, Cheryl O'Brien, Richard Deschler, Denise O'Connor, Ronald Lanu, Dolores Lanu, Lauren Herbert, Helen Manahan, Sharon Smith, Susan Barad, Virginia Meyer, Nancy Hill, Cheryl Sequilia, Nancy Spleen, Mary Riddle, Paula Trudau, Deborah Cody, Sandra Lavesky, Karen Cole, Anne Marie Smith, Nancy Murphy, Melissa Simpson, Robert McLeod, Stephanie Lowe, Suzanne Pelland, Tara Humphrey, Beverly Collins, Michelle Williams, Mary Ann Cieza, Lisa Prescott, Gail Thursby, John Karcheck, Brenda King, Martha Macado, Deborah Freely, John Mahoney, Gerald Stewart, Patricia Robinson, Jean Dupuy, Osnalt, and Kevin Davis. Congratulations.
So again, we'd like to congratulate you for your many years of service to the community, to the children of the district, and well-deserved retirement and enjoy the time off. And we'll try to get you back as tutors, but we'll give you a month or two off, and then the phone will be ringing. So congratulations, and thank you for coming down tonight. Appreciate it, and enjoy your retirement. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have superintendent's evaluation. I guess what we'll do is just go right down the line. I'll start with Ms. Clark and let her... Wasn't sure if there's a subcommittee report, but we'll just let you give the subcommittee report, and then we'll just go right down the line without comments.
Sure. The minutes from the... We met the other night on Thursday, May 27th, as the Human Resources and Labor Relations Subcommittee. The minutes are forthcoming, but I have a draft form, so they'll be in the meeting on June 16th. But at that meeting, we did go over the superintendent's evaluation. At that time, I had collected all of the evaluations from individual committee members, and at the meeting itself, Ms. Martin provided hers to me. And we did go through each of the standards in the evaluation form, had discussions about different topics within the evaluation, the highlights, the questions that committee members had for Dr. Boyd. Dr. Boyd also went through a presentation that provided more detail or an overview of each of the areas that he was being evaluated on and the goals that were set at the beginning of the year. And the recommendation from the meeting, based on the evaluations collected, is a rating of proficient, and that is the recommendation this evening, is a motion to accept the evaluation as written with the complete rating of proficient.
Thank you. Did you have any comments of your own set?
Um... I did comment into the evaluation document themselves. My comment on the evaluation form itself, I think, really speaks as an overall performance of the superintendent over this past year, which has been a year that is unprecedented. I think the job that he and his team did, moving our district forward and continuing to work not only on getting our students, as many students as possible, back into schools in person, was a Herculean effort that was accomplished, and... But we also made progress on the goals that we had been working on, our strategic goals. And I believe that many districts across the state put a pause on many of the other work that folks were doing, and I think that there's a lot of value for us continuing to move forward in the direction that we, as a district, have committed to working on. So I just want to say thank you, and I believe that a proficient rating is strong, and Dr. Boyd has done a fantastic job leading our district. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna go right down the line, because this is a public meeting, and sometimes people don't have access to the reports. So we should speak on the report, and it's a public evaluation, so we'll just go right down the line. We'll keep it, you know, our comments professional and to the point, and we'll get through the evaluation. So, Mr. Dillon, if you want to go next? Oh, all right, I know, I keep doing that, sorry. We go, Mr. Dakota. I keep going back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comment, and it's not gonna be... I don't know if it's gonna be on... Is it gonna be posted online?
Well, it should be, it's all public record.
Okay, yep. I mean, it was difficult to really sit down and be objective about this in terms of, like, what was good. Again, we had five months of normalcy, well, eight months of normalcy and 15 months of abnormalcy. So it's very difficult to kind of categorize all of the various aspects of this evaluation. But I think at the end of the day, we need to keep our correspondences with our communication with our teachers, I think is the most important aspect of what he has to work on, to try to keep a better working rapport with them. I know that there's been an awful lot of pushing back and forth, and I know that that is partly due to the negotiations for contracts and so forth. But I think that would be really, really helpful going forward. I think that proficient was a good rating to give him, at least at this stage. Hopefully, this next school year will be one that's sort of normal, if I can dare say that. And I don't know if that might be like, knock on wooden, and hopefully that we can have a far better, or at least some semblance of a normal year going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, I can echo a little bit of what Mr. Dakota was saying. Certainly, getting a grip on negotiations currently and in the future is, you know, something that Dr. Boyd's gonna have to really improve on. But I do think that proficient was the right mark for him. Also, like Mr. Dakota said, I mean, this was a difficult year to evaluate anybody's job. You know, it took a lot more work, and you didn't get as much done just because everything was going on. So I think it's fair to consider that, certainly, when you're evaluating anybody's job during this time. I guess what I'd like to talk about is the comments. I mean, how is it... I'm actually kind of embarrassed to submit these comments, to be honest with you. Ms. Doherty, I mean, this reads like a blog post more than it does... Excuse me. It reads like a blog post or a piece of campaign literature, to be honest with you. You know, right from the start, I mean, opening was a disaster beyond reasonable. You know, bringing up all of the difficulties that we had during the pandemic is not helping anybody.
Can I just say one? I just interrupt one.
Yep.
So, everybody's comments are... I don't want to say that, because it is an election year, I don't want to say that people are doing this for the election, but...
Well, it's true.
We all do evaluate ourselves. We all do evaluations on our own standards, plus the standards we have.
Mm-hmm.
So...
I know, but a lot of this stuff has no place in an evaluation whatsoever. I will say what is fair is the paragraph about this, you know, some of the Dr. Boyd's statistics, right? I think a lot of that is fair in that paragraph. Some of those statistics are misleading. But other than that...
Why don't we just... We'll just stay on point, too. Everybody is entitled to their opinions, we don't have to agree with them, but, you know, you can agree or disagree, but I don't think we have to...
This is all anecdotal evidence, that there is no... Like, there's no detail to back up, and there are accusations made in an evaluation.
Well, I don't want to get into a debate on the comments.
I was interested in going line by line, right through the whole thing. We're not gonna do that tonight?
Well, we're not gonna go line by line on our comments, but we can go by line by line on our own comments and on the evaluation. But to dissect someone else's comments, let's just say that we agree or don't agree with them.
There are blatant accusations made about committee members and the superintendent himself in these comments. And, you know, there's a policy in the MASC evaluation rules that two or more comments need to be, you know, two or more like comments need to be mentioned from members of the board in order for them to be included. And Ms. Doherty's entire comment, you know, whatever the heck it is, just got included. And it's shameful. This is pathetic. I can't... It's completely off-topic in a lot of ways, and it should not be submitted whatsoever. It's complete pandering. Should I go on, or are you gonna...
No, go on, I just want to keep everything not personal.
Several occasions, the superintendent did not honor school committee policy. I'd really like more evidence on that. Hiring people without community input or disrespecting community input. I don't believe that we have any power in the hiring process. Is that correct? Outside of the superintendent himself?
Yeah.
Okay, so disastrous results. I'd like a definition on what disastrous results were. The paragraph about all the complaints about schoolsite councils. The schoolsite councils have not been done in years in the city, and this is the first time in a long time that every school even has an up-and-running schoolsite council. About accessing registration. I don't know why we can't get over this. This is a... It's ridiculous to even have in the evaluation. We went online for registration. We still offer help at the Family Resource Center for anybody that has trouble on the computer. They can sit there with someone on the computer. They don't need technology to register. They can get translation services as well at the same time. Is that correct, Mr. Boyd, Dr. Boyd? Translation services are provided down there. So it's no different. All it does is create a little bit more access for everybody. Professional culture. Superintendent claims he increased collaboration. Complete pandering. I mean, thank you. We all agree with that paragraph, but complete pandering to the teachers. The next paragraph, I don't... It seems like it's setting up her motion later. I don't know who exactly she's talking about when she says committee members who have, you know, not kept information confidential. I'd really like to know who she's talking about there. And more pandering down at the bottom. So, you know, really, I mean, one fair paragraph in the whole thing, and all it is is empty accusations. I think it's sad, and I don't... I actually disagree that we should submit any of those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to start by saying I don't enjoy this. I don't like being the one who is coming out with the needs improvement over everybody else. It's not something I've thrived to do. I've had numerous conversations with the superintendent, several emails about some of these concerns. I do feel, however, that it is an important part of the job to give feedback that's not just a grade or a rating, but also suggestions. And I would expect that much of this wasn't a surprise to Dr. Boyd. He knew about my concerns with the reports, not getting the information we needed, but getting pages and pages of stuff that was just killing trees. And in terms of the comments, I agree. If I had more time, I could have tightened them up better. I was under very difficult time constraints, and to refer back to the MASC guidelines about how we're supposed to do this evaluation, when we did not follow any of the guidelines, we did not have a discussion about the timeline, about the process. So I did the best I could. My focus is to provide constructive feedback about how we need to move forward. My information basis is the same evidence that we've all had through the course of the last year, as well as the community input, what I've observed for myself, what people have told me, and what I've seen. And that's where these concerns come from. And I don't think it was out of line to remember how difficult last fall was, and it was difficult for everyone in the world. I get that. But I think that we spent a lot of time on that 3% in person, and we were not ready for the remote that we were thrust into within three weeks. I think we spent a lot of time going over the same things over and over again, and that was where that's coming from. In terms of specific evidence that's given to us with only half the story, like claiming the 2020 graduation rate increased to the highest overall four-year cohort since 2017, when, without factoring in that passing MCAS wasn't required, is misleading. And when you have evidence like that, reporting on the improvements to the district-wide average daily attendance with ignoring chronic absenteeism, or saying we increased enrollment by 500% in the district's early college partnership program, without mentioning students are now required to take a one-credit MCC class, that impacts credibility for me. And maybe it doesn't for other people, but it impacts credibility. And I think that this whole issue of... I don't want to get lost, that there have been some positive things, and I know that everyone else is really focusing on that, but the diversity hiring, the schoolsite councils having a say in our budget, that new diverse teacher leader presentation that I attended last Saturday, there have been many good things, but there are also real areas where we need improvement. And I would say, not just communication with our staff, which came like, hit us like a ton of bricks with the hundreds and hundreds of signatures from people at all levels of the district, teachers, social workers, speech language pathologists stepping out, signing their name, and saying that they weren't part of the process. I think that that's just one piece. I think communication with central office hasn't been great. Communication with us needs to be improved. I mentioned that there have been a couple of reports I had to send back. I still never got the report on the STEM school. We do have a policy around hiring that involves community interview teams, and where they make recommendations. There have been a number of occasions where that has not been followed, and that was where that concern came up. And regarding the professional culture, I have really, in my 13 years of being on the school committee, never experienced staff afraid to speak out, asking me to keep their names confidential for fear of reprisal, don't even mention the role, don't say we're psychologists or... Because it comes back. All that stuff is based on my own experience. I'm not making this up. And the superintendent himself telling me one of the chiefs should not have been as bold in what he said to me. This is not a healthy environment that we want to have our employees in. And I think that that is where that motion for tonight came. I think that it behooves us, in our role, to develop a culture that truly is inclusive and collaborative. That's what I'm asking for here.
Mike, yeah?
And I just... I want to close in saying that I think we have a long way to go to get to be the true, you know, city on a hill that we dreamed for ourselves. And I think that Dr. Boyd, she has a lot of the same visions with me about how we get there. But to just sit back and not take the opportunity, which is our obligation in this role, to say what my concerns are, to me, was not doing the job. So I appreciate your time. I realize that some members don't agree with me on what I've seen and what I've heard, but I do feel that I needed to express what my observations had shown me. And I... So I ranked Dr. Boyd's needs improvement in all the categories that we had discussed and focused on for this year, because even though there were many wins, overall, there were gaping areas that, to me, needed improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the rating of proficient is fair, and I think that Dr. Boyd deserves it, and he earned those marks. The COVID pandemic has made every school district challenging, and nobody in this generation has gone through it before, and Dr. Boyd led our schools through it safely. During the COVID crazy time of COVID, the teachers and entire school department worked extra hard and did not get any, including the... I think...
Yeah, it's working now.
Okay. So the entire school districts worked extra hard, including the school committee, and we didn't get any appreciation for that effort. Often, we got criticized, and the school leaders, including teachers and all the school staff, not only you have to look after your own health, but also the health of the students. Then you have to provide them with education any way possible. You have to adjust to the states of Massachusetts and D.C.'s protocols that keep on changing all the time. And you have to make sure to provide foods and meals, and most of the students and family, they need help, and they still need help. COVID is not yet completely gone yet, and we need to focus on what benefits for the greater good. Our school system, not only we talk about having staff from diverse backgrounds, but we are doing it. Our school staff are more diverse than we have ever been. For me, I tried in the past to have family involvement, and under Dr. Boyd, every school now have a schoolsite council. Family Resources Center is now better equipped to help families. In the past, I did try hard to have proper translation and parents liaisons. We now have several parent liaisons and enough funding in the budget for translation. If you have gone to visit schools and talked to staff like I and Mr. Dakota have done in the past, then you have learned that more helps are needed in the schools. I advocated for more up-to-date technology and more help for the middle... and more help for the middle and elementary school clerks, and more help for the middle school guidance counselors, more help addressing the need for more paras. So I feel optimistic going forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think we collectively as a body, and certainly even as a community, have recognized that this year has been one of absolute unforeseen challenges. I don't find, you know, I don't find any fault with the response from the administration straight through to our frontline staff in that it was a huge, huge lift to be able to continue to provide educational services across this district during an incredibly difficult time. And I think that that's, in my mind, kind of an accepted kind of status for not just our district, but every district in the nation. And I think that, you know, in that kind of, you know, rarefied environment, I think for a lot of the areas, as I was going through this process, you know, coming to a proficient was a recognition that, yes, that, you know, these things were met in a, you know... There you go. In an incredibly difficult year. So I think that that's certainly important to note. I do think that, you know, some of the challenges that came through as I was going through my personal evaluation of the superintendent, and I brought these all up during our subcommittee meeting, you know, there were items for which there was no evidence, that there were no artifacts provided, and things that we haven't even, in a cursory way, discussed. So talking about the evaluations of other staff, of staff throughout the district, you know, looking at those, there were kind of two indicators that were impacted by that. You know, the sum total of information we had on that item was being told in real time at that meeting that it had been done. I appreciate that, but it's a standard that we need to grade based on evidence. And we had absolutely no evidence, no one on this committee, to my knowledge, unless they received it in a different venue because I hadn't seen absolutely anything in that particular area. So that was what had led to my needs improvement on that topic. I do think that, you know, again, some of the others, the engagement activity, you know, we certainly need improvement in that area. I don't discount that we have parent councils at all of our schools. And I think that is a significant step forward. I think that that's parent involvement of, you know, a number of parents that you can count on one or two hands. We have a district of, you know, over 14,000. So engagement of, you know, a small number is a start. And I'm happy to give that as a success. But it certainly is an area where we still need additional improvement if we can honestly say that, you know, our engagement with our families is in a solid place. You know, the other two areas where I had expressed a needs improvement really did focus on professional culture. You know, I have heard directly from staff at all levels and from across this district that there are concerns about voicing opposing opinions and that there have been circumstances where people really have felt that there was retribution for when they had spoken out on behalf of students or in other situations. So I think that, you know, for the particular areas that I focused on in this evaluation, again, I offered at that meeting, and again tonight, kind of what had driven my choice of indicator for those specific areas. I'll also say that I think that in terms of the questions of whether we call it credibility, whatever we want to kind of ascribe to that, the reality is, is that in an incredibly difficult, challenging year, there's no defeat in saying that it was a difficult, challenging year. I understand that as an educational leader, the superintendent and his team have to take on the responsibility for promoting new ideas and being able to kind of be cheerleaders for the district, maybe in a certain, at a certain level. But at the end of the day, having a clear-cut, direct, and honest assessment of the challenges this district has faced really will give us far more valuable information in the way we move forward. That is an argument of kind of gradation. So I understand that there's, you know, the line can be constantly moving. But the reality is, is that the more hardcore, factually-based information that we get that can tip us off to problems coming. I mean, that's where we can be the most effective, both as a committee and as a collective group working together in this district. So knowing what the problems are is the first step in addressing them and ultimately fixing them. So it shouldn't be seen as some kind of mark of defeat if there's a problem. There will always be problems, and we will always be called on to find appropriate solutions. That's really my kind of, you know, conclusion of the evaluation portion. I will, however, also add that as seven individual members who have not only the opportunity, but the responsibility of evaluating a superintendent on an annual basis, again, I can freely admit that this process was challenging and requires a great many changes in the next year before we go through this again. But I think that it is, for myself, a point of professional respect that I'm not going to, I'm not here to evaluate my other members. I will do my job, and I will do it the best way I know how. And I think that for any one of the members, I think it's very clear that we took this seriously. And I don't appreciate having particular members take this as an opportunity to evaluate each other. We do not have that charge. Our charge is only to evaluate the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dillon?
Ms. Martin, it's complete pandering.
We have to speak to the chair, Mike, Mr. Dillon.
Mr. Mayor, it's complete pandering. I'd like to remind Ms. Martin that.
All right.
Thank you. I also would like to remind everybody that we screwed this up. This is our job. This was an awful process. We weren't organized. And I feel bad for Ms. Clark because, you know, she was put in charge of it. And if it wasn't for her, then we probably wouldn't have even done one. We need to get better. That's another issue with the comments that I saw here. If I wasn't embarrassed with these comments, then I wouldn't have said anything. But this is like, you know, it's like a campaign party speech. Give me a break.
Mr. Dakota? Mayor Leahy?
Thank you. First, I want to say that I guess I do agree that we let this process go get out of control. We should have prepared better. We had since November to get everything together. And the process just spiraled out of control, and we had to rush to get this done by June. The comments made by my committee members, colleagues, you know, we are here to evaluate the superintendent. We're not here to evaluate anybody else but the superintendent. We did get a set of standards that we agreed on. When I went through the evaluation myself, there were a lot of questions here that I couldn't answer because I don't see the superintendent in that role or those duties on a day-to-day basis. So I answered them the best I could. I gave a lot of needs improvement. But when you go to the key here on the paperwork, needs improvement basically says satisfactory. The proficient goes to fully satisfied, and I wasn't fully satisfied. So I did a lot of needs improvement. I put some proficient where I thought I did know how the superintendent interacts on a day-to-day basis. And I have talked to the superintendent over the year, and he knows, you know, where I stand. I'm a person of action. And during the year, I think the reports are too long, and they're too drawn out, and they don't have enough action planned for me particularly. So that was one of the areas that I'd like to see you work on. I want to see us have more concise reports that come up with an action plan of where we are headed. You know, as far as how you interact with the committee here, I would like to see you improve on that. What was said publicly lately with the one-on-one meeting, sure. Have we met with you one-on-one over the year? Yes. But during an evaluation, we should know better that we shouldn't be meeting one-on-one while we're doing an evaluation. And speaking with, you know, with what's happening right now, the relevance to the budget and how we're going to spend those ESER funds, you know, we do do things differently here in Lowell. And I have mentioned this to you, and I've asked that you come in and you should evaluate and learn the community. I appreciate that you bought a house here. But sometimes it takes a little longer to learn the community. And what we've heard over the last two weeks is that we... I personally, and what I've heard, is I want more money spent in the classroom. I'm not going to go for any administration or supervisory jobs. I think that the money should be going directly into the classroom, whether it's whiteboards, whether it's supplies. I've been here a long time. So the only way to get more interaction with the students is to make the classrooms smaller by putting more adults in there. So I'd like to see more paras, more reading tutors, whatever it is, instructional help in the classroom. And I think that was brought up loud and clear. And this is how I'm doing my evaluation on the interaction of the day-to-day with the schools, with the students. And I just would like to see you interact a little bit closer with the schools. I know that, as Ms. Martin said and others, this has been an extraordinary year. We did a lot. Kids got computers. We fed a lot of people in the community. It wasn't easy. We adapted, and we did the best we could. But what I would like to see coming from your office, Mr. Superintendent, is just clearer and more, and better timing on our execution of our plans. That's all. So some of the plans that we've come up with, they're good plans, but they just, they fall a little bit to the last minute, and it creates a lot of stress and a lot of anxiety for people. And that's the stuff that, you know, I would like to see you work on. And you can work on it with us as a committee. But we have to make sure that when we roll out these plans, that we roll them out in a more timely manner. I think overall, you know, Lowell isn't an easy place to come in. I think you're doing the best job that you can. But I just would like to see you listening to the community a little bit more, listening to the staff, and try to incorporate some ideas into that when we're rolling out our new plans and what we're coming up with for the next year. So that's my evaluation of you. I did give you a needs improvement. But again, according to the keys here, it's satisfactory. And again, I would just like to see more involvement with the community, with the council, with the committee members, and, you know, hang in there. We don't want you to fail. We're not here to have you fail. We're here to help you succeed. And you have a few more years on your contract, and that's what we're here for, to support each other. But I think we have to listen to each other and reflect and take, you know, our action plans, you know, to a new level and really, you know, involve the schools. The school-side councils, you're right, they haven't been effectively used in a long time. And here they are. And we're getting a lot of feedback from them. But, you know, let's bring up our struggling schools. Let's make sure we're listening to the community. If we need two vice principals in a school, if we need a change at the head of school, let's do it. If we need to pour more money into the school for supplies or whatever support they need, let's listen to them. And I think that's where we should be heading with next year's action plan. So we have the money to do it. Let's all work together, and let's try to, you know, have a better school year. Thank you.
So do we have a motion on the floor for the results came back proficient? Okay. Need a second. Mr. Dakota? So we'll do a roll call on the evaluation. Mr. Dillon?
Thank you. Can we have discussion on the comments included? Or is this just how it's going to be submitted?
Yeah, this is how it's submitted. We did our public evaluation. We have the written...
No, I understand, but, you know. I disagree with a lot of the comments that are on the evaluation that we're submitting as a body.
No, you can. I mean, we can disagree with each other. We're all entitled to our own opinions. It's our own evaluation. But we're just...
Is this not submitted as a report of the body?
It is a report of the body, and the results are that it's proficient.
Okay.
A proficient rating. So, and the comments are all included with the rating.
Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Arty? Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Minutes. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the FY '22 budget session, May 17, 2021, regular scheduled and special meeting minutes of Lowell School Committee on May 19, and placed on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. All in favor, say aye. Permission to enter, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The permissions to enter are located within your packet. There's one addendum I would like to pull, what I believe is the last item in the permission to enter. Staff has asked for more time to review and analyze. That regards the Empower Schools at Lowell High School. It's part of a grant package that the school has received. Staffs asked for more time to be able to analyze and review that. So if we could, with the exception of that item, the rest are recommended for approval.
Any questions on permission to enter? Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Just with the Aramark contract, I know, I think we have talked about for some time, perhaps looking at the levels of our food for next year. I think that'll be an important endeavor over perhaps the summer months to see where we can make some changes to improve the quality. We have been receiving information from students, emails about the food, and obviously, understanding the remainder of this year, the challenges and the lack of opportunity for hot lunches. But knowing that next year, there's an opportunity to perhaps move, continue to move things up as we were moving in that direction last year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Just to note, this new amount does reflect an increase in quality of approximately 500,000, 600,000. It also includes an increase by 150,000 for a new point-of-sale system, you know, the scanning system. So both improvements are included in this amount.
Ms. Darney?
Thank you. I have a question also about Aramark. Do they do yearly surveys? Is that part of our contract with them? Because I know, I'm sure Ms. Clark probably got the same email I got, that students are complaining about the food still. And I'm just wondering if they do surveys of the students to try to find out what students want. Is that in the... want. Is that in the contract and are they doing it annually? Thank you.
We can take that back. Thank you. I think that's a good note. We'll take that back and consult with Aramark on that.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the banner of pest control, has there been any evaluation by the schools, individual schools that have used them? Are they satisfied with them? Have they been successful, uh, in, in curbing the pests in buildings? Cause we know there are a lot of them. I'm not talking about the kids, honestly.
Whoever wants to answer that.
Uh, Ms. Turner, do you have updated information? If, uh, if not, Dr. Hall can certainly provide a report to the committee under separate cover.
I do feel as though they are, um, they are satisfactory. At, at one given time, they were not. We were questioning whether it was working because we were still having a problem with mice. But since that time, when they, um, increased their services, we haven't had, um, complaints since then. So that's why Mr. Underwood is still utilizing them. Otherwise, we would have changed to a different vendor. So at this point, I think they are sat- we, I don't think we've done a survey based on the schools. It's just the feedback and complaints have, you know, minimized. So.
Right. I think the custodians would be speaking to, to Rick Underwood about concerns. You know, we've got this company come in and we still have pests all over the place, can't control them. Um, but I know that like, for instance, at Lowell High School, you're, you're spanning over a canal, hello, and then, and then you're so close to a river as well. So, I mean, it, there are going to be pests, a lot of them. So it's trying to stay on top of that. I, I, I get it. So, so I'm, I'm glad that we're going to be renewing their contract. Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions from the chair, if you don't mind. Um, Ms. Turner, on the first one, um, is this a new contract? Is that what you're trying to, it says option year three. So is this a two-year contract?
No, it's a five-year contract and this is year three. We have, um, two more years before we have to go out to bid in 2024.
All right. So if it's a five-year bid, why are we in the, do we always accept the permission to enter every year?
Yeah, we always bring it forward just to keep you in, um, informed.
Oh, okay. All right. And then the daily group, you got option four and five. I thought we were just doing a one-year extension or is that what the fourth year is?
Yeah. You'll notice in, uh, the notes on that one, it, it specifies, uh, the adjustments there and that does reflect all of the committee's input that has been negotiated across prior input.
Okay. So we had a three-year deal and now we, we, uh, we're doing the option for year four?
Yes, that's to exercise the option for 2021, 2022.
Okay. All right. And then the only other thing was, um, the Romanowski one. Is that for next year, this year? What, is that the whole year, just the spring or the fall? What's that one? Ten thousand?
That's for next school year.
So the whole school year, twenty-one, twenty-
Twenty-one, twenty-two, yes.
Okay. All right. And then the banner pest control, was that rebid or did Mr. Underwood just stick with them?
No, I do believe that was rebid with the, um, city. Um, and they have a three-year term on their contract.
That was, so it's the low bidder though, too?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And to Mr. Dakota's remarks, uh, with all the construction going on Lowell High, is there going to be extra emphasis on Lowell High? Do you know if that's part of the contract?
I'm sure they've considered it. If not, we can bring that forward to Mr. Underwood to make sure he does consider it.
Okay. All right. Uh, that, that was all the, and obviously the seventy-one thousand, that's two gymnasium floors, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions on the permission to enter? Roll call. Oh, motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call.
Ms. Martin? Yes. Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Arty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next, we have memorials. Uh, first memorial for Donnell Boykins, uh, Lowell High School student and for Mr. Gary Buckley, retired Lowell High School teacher. We could dock in the chambers. Next, we have motions. First motion by Ms. Arty, request, uh, request this statement be added to the district's policy and government document. Lowell Public Schools is committed to environmentally friendly management of its resources, which includes recycling as well as disposing of yard waste into a composite stream. Seconded by Ms. Martin, Ms. Arty.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. This actually came about because I am, a citizen called me that he saw at one of our schools, they were putting, uh, leaves, um, in plastic bags and throwing them in the trash, not composting them. So when I called Mr. Underwood, he said they do try to use, you know, the paper bags as much as possible, but sometimes they run out and they don't bother. So I thought, you know, if we had something, you know, on the books that said this is a priority for us, you know, and I asked Mr. Underwood, do you think this would be helpful to let all schools know? It's not something we'd like to do. It's something we need to do, is put our yard waste out into the compost stream. Um, and he thought that it would be helpful. So that was why I came up with that idea. And I, I mean, I don't know if we have to actually, my thinking was to put it as a policy, but then that enables him to enforce it at all the schools. You know, you, the leaves and the yard waste go out in leaf bags and get put into the compost stream. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we coordinate, have Mr. Underwood coordinate with the city recycling, um, department, uh, where they could either supply those needed bags for recycling. I think that would be probably something that would be advantageous for the school department to look into that. If, if the recycling department has those resources, let's tap into them. They're already there. Let's, let's use them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yep, Ms. Clark?
Thank you. So I agree that sustainability should be a mission and value, uh, within Lowell Public Schools, but I don't necessarily believe that making a statement makes it so. And so while I appreciate Mr. Dakota's, um, thoughts on perhaps reaching out to the city, um, about the bags, I mean, right, I think in my mind, if we're going to make a statement about being environmentally friendly, we need to do more in the planning and identifying how we as a district are going to be, um, sustainable, more sustainable in our actions. Um, so I, I guess one question that comes to mind is, um, when you say compost stream, I've not, I've not ever heard that phrase before. And so I'm curious what that means because I know personally, some composting, um, yard waste is not always, um, compostable or not always accepted as compost. So I'm just curious, what does that mean? That's a question, maybe for Ms. Arty.
Sure, Ms. Darney.
Um, I asked my husband, he's on the Sustainability Council, what he thought would be good, but I am not attached to any of this language. And in fact, if we wanted to send it to the policy subcommittee or to, to facilities, I don't care. I just want us to be, in whatever way makes sense, to have some kind of a priority statement about we care about sustainability, we care about the leaves and that stuff, not, I mean, cause when you think about it, if they throw it in the trash, then it gets weighed and the ci- city pays for it as trash. So it's not even good for the pocketbook, right? If they put it in the recycling and it goes with the yard waste. So, but I'm open to whatever suggestions. If, if we want to send it, or if the administration wants to come back to us. All I did was speak to Mr. Underwood about it. So I, I, it wasn't a whole lot of deep thought about what's the best way going forward. I mean, certainly, we've had motions in the past where we looked at recycling in our cafeterias, for instance, the big cans they use of tomatoes, that those, you know, can go into the, um, the recycling bit, uh, cycle or whatever you want to call it. So if we wanted to take a more comprehensive look, I wouldn't be against that. I, this was just kind of a quick, you know, I'd had a citizen call me and I said, let me look into it. If there's something quick we can do to just at least now, you know, get people realizing that, you know, the schoolyard waste, the leaves and the, the brush, those things need to go in, um, the recyclable bag. So whatever the committee wants to do with it, I'm good.
Yep. Mr. Dillon?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is certainly a worthy, um, topic of discussion. And, and I do agree a little bit with Ms. Clark that, I don't know, maybe just putting the wording in or is not enough maybe, but, um, yeah, definitely talking more and working something out with Mr. Underwood. I, I, like, I think it could be a, probably a simple solution within the custodial department to, you know, let's keep our stock of, uh, paper bags up and, and make sure that they're, you know, our whole staff is just aware of, of that whole situation that could be productive. Um, thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I move that we send this to the policy subcommittee and also invite, uh, the city side, uh, recycling people, maybe have a representative here to help us out to answer questions that we may have pertaining to that.
Can I just add a suggestion from the chair? That was probably at the Sullivan School and it was a big mix-up. The place hasn't really been, if we're going to be honest, the place hasn't been raked up in years. So they finally raked it up and I saw it myself. I don't know why they put it in plastic bags. They should know better. They shouldn't have put it into the dumpsters because again, we're going to weigh it and pay more. So, you know, it was a mistake by our staff to allow that.
Your Honor.
It shouldn't happen again.
It was at the Sullivan.
All right. Well, it happened at the Sullivan and-
So maybe it does deserve a bigger look, uh, than just, I mean, I don't know.
I know. It's just another night out when we could just-
Okay, so we're trying to do-
Don't put leaves in plastic bags. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I mean, I think that the idea of us saying it, that this is a policy. It's not like, oh, I ran out of-
Well, it's a city policy and they should know better. And quite frankly, our facilities team shouldn't allow it to happen. So if Ms. Superintendent can speak to the facilities team and say, please follow the city rules, it's all done and we don't have to go out another night. So, but if you want to push it on, I, make the motion.
Well, I, I think we could add it to facilities because we're already trying to meet with the city-
Okay.
About the parks cleanup and then just to have the conversation. But I agree. I mean, it is kind of city, city policy that we're supposed to be putting yard waste in paper bags. So.
Got a, so motion by Mr. Dakota, seconded by, uh, you are. All right. All right. He'll add it.
So it would be approved and then sent to the facilities?
He'll add it, okay. He'll add it on the note.
Okay.
Mary's on topic. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
All right.
Next motion, uh, seven-two, request superintendent provide the committee with a report on number of high school students failing two or more classes this year and compare it to the last three. Seconded by Ms. Martin, Ms. Darney?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I think that this information would be very helpful for us as we try to determine what the losses have been, um, because of the pandemic. Uh, we know, we've heard, you know, from the students, there's been a less engagement because of the whole remote learning piece. So my hope was by targeting on these specific, you know, failing two or more classes, that's going to speak, um, volumes about the engagement of our students and really give us a, a better idea of where we, what we need to do to recoup that, to recoup those kids. Are they going to be in summer school? What supports will be there in the fall? That, that was my intention. Um, I believe that the high school is tracking this data anyway. So it would be good for us to take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Dillon, then Ms. Clark?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, uh, maybe, uh, within the collection of data for this, um, report, I know I brought up, uh, Dr. Boyd, the number of students who are not receiving a diploma due to MCAS. And I, I know it's not necessarily the same thing, but, um, I don't know, if those numbers are, are available, that would be nice to, to have in the same type of report.
Yeah. Dr. Gillery is prepared to provide you the fourth quarter key performance indicator report at what will be his last meeting.
Sure.
Uh, that is coming up here. That's our next meeting. Uh, so Dr. Gillery, if you can add these notes, uh, part of the KPIs that we had, did establish at the beginning of the year was both, uh, related to the course completion and course grades during the course of this year. So it would be relevant. Dr. Gillery, if you can take that note for the final KPI, uh, report out. Thank you, Dr. Gillery.
So I am wondering, um, what we're going to do with this data. Um, number one, is it also, in addition to that, is it something that we're tracking? Obviously, we're tracking individually whether students have passed or failed courses. But, uh, and we know this last year, there are struggles, additional struggles by students, and it's in fact why we have the presentation later tonight about summer learning opportunities from, uh, you know, kindergarten all the way through seniors. Um, so I think what I want to start looking at when I'm seeing these motions is what decisions or what are, are we going to be making decisions when we receive this data? Are we going to be taking any action? Because we ask for a lot of data, some of which might be readily available and easy to provide, but some of it is not. And I think we do have plans in place for helping students who have struggled this year, which many of them have, to recoup and regain learning loss. I mean, it's what we talk about every time we come together. And so I want to be sure that we're making good use of these information requests because if we're not going to do anything with it, you know, comparing last year to three years ago, I don't know what that's going to tell us. I don't, I can't really think off the top of my head what, what, what I would read into that, um, metric. I, I would assume probably that it, more kids, last year was a struggle for more kids. We know that. So I just, I don't, I'm, I want to just be sure that we're, we're asking the right questions so that we can ultimately then take action or make decisions with that information. Because if it's really just information for the sake of information, I don't know that we need it in addition to some of the other metrics that we're getting about how people are, how performance is going. We're, we are measuring performance. We're getting key performance indicators, which we've been getting throughout this year, that is showing changes over time from quarter to quarter in some cases, and even, um, comparing this year to last year, which then will continue to next year and we'll be, now be able to see three years of data, which will be great. But, but going back to collect data from three years ago at this point, what, what value is that? So that's a question. Thank you.
Might give us a good indication on how well we did in the pandemic though, too. So you got to look at the other half. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I really can only support this motion if it doesn't take one minute away from our classroom teachers and Paris. This, it's got to be information that can be gleaned some other way. I can support it, but if, if it's going to intrude on the class, we, we cannot spare a minute, one minute, on any, any extraneous material that doesn't have anything to do with trying to recoup what we've lost for our kids. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, am I correct in that what you've indicated is that when we receive our KPI report, uh, at our next meeting, it will include this, it already includes this information and it would just be a matter of comparing it to last year, a single year?
The course grades, excuse me, compared to last year, if the question is about three years ago, the KPIs haven't typically done that, but I would have to defer to Dr. Gillery about the data sorts that he uses.
I don't believe Ms. Arty is looking for three years of, am I wrong?
Well, up to three years.
My thinking with that is last year was difficult, this year was difficult. What's the norm? You know, if we look and say, this number of kids are failing these two or more core classes, how does that compare to a normal school year in order to try to balance what have been the losses? That was my thinking with, but last year, I don't think should be difficult.
I wouldn't think so.
And they know the students that are failing the courses, they have to. In order to be able to graduate, they're tracking, not the teachers, that they're tracking that information at the high school.
The, the committee's tracking, the committee's tracking that information as part of your quarterly KPI. So you receive that quarterly- The, the committee's tracking, the committee's tracking that information as part of your quarterly KPI. So you receive that quarterly report. I, if the committee is, uh, so inclined, Dr. Gillery, uh, what do you think is reasonable here for you to include in the June sixteenth? So the committee has some information as to amount of timeliness here.
So, um, thank you all for the, the question and the discussion. So I think, um, to Mr. Dakota's point, I'm going to take it in a slightly different way. We are in the part, uh, at the point with the data office of doing end of year closeout and state reporting. Um, so, um, and I do know that the high school, uh, as you've articulated, are deeply involved right now with clearing students and clearing graduates as such. Um, so, uh, I'm sure they have a report that they could pull with what the current status is. Um, but the minute they pull it, it's going to be outdated. Um, the difficult part would be going back. I think my present understanding of Aspen, our system, is that it does not do a good job of tracking where kids were many years ago. It tracks where they currently are. So unless, uh, we pull those, uh, have that data to pull and do point in time pulls, we won't necessarily have the comparatives, uh, in that sense. But we're certainly more than willing to, uh, take a look at and see what's reasonable in that sense. Now, the KPI, uh, course grades that we pull are for the middle schools. Uh, we don't have the high schools included in that particular road up. So when you're looking at the course grade pieces that we compare from marking period to marking period, those are at the middle school point. But, um, I, I can certainly check with the high school to see what lists they have, um, with this information. But, um, there, to pull them away, I think to Mr. Dakota's point, to pull them away from what they're currently working on, to clear students and get them, uh, ready for what's coming next, I think would be my only concern.
Mr. Dillon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Dr. Gillery retract the, uh, MCAS information from the report as well. I don't, I don't really need that information. That's something that I would like to kind of, you know, get on to in the future. So, uh, that doesn't need-
I think it was in the report.
That doesn't need to be, uh-
It's not even an issue.
Could I finish my-
Yeah, I know. Well, Dr. Boyd just mentioned to make a note of it and I was just making sure that he knows that I, we don't need that information now. Thank you.
I didn't know you went down-
I'm sorry. It, I would just say, I mean, as terms of the MCAS, I mean, it's not, it, there's been a waiver in place now so that we, there are no students who wouldn't be graduating because of an MCAS requirement because it's been waived for the year.
I understand it's not relevant to this. It's something that I was asking for before. I, it was simply just making a note to Dr. Gillery that he does not have to worry about that right now. That's it.
Okay. I'm a little confused. Mr. Superintendent, don't we track at the high school kids failing classes anyways? Isn't that information like readily available?
Yeah, I think what Dr. Gillery is, is sharing is just the amount of requests that are on the same individuals to start generating reports at this time, which I think is what Mr. Dakota was saying. We can provide any type of data at any time, uh, but we do have the same individuals working through the same data sets. And right now is, Dr. Gillery, what you're saying is making sure that they're working through all the current graduates. If I'm understanding you correctly, is what their time's allocated to. Uh, so what I would suggest here is if, uh, if the committee is okay with it, allow Dr. Gillery to work back. He does lead our data team and to come back and to share, at least at the next meeting, he could share what's reasonable for them and by what timeline. And it, it does sound like this is information that's of interest to the committee. At the same time, we want to lessen the burden on staff. So if the committee's okay with it, Dr. Gillery, at the next KPI meeting can share with you as he was prepared to do. And then also share with you, here's what else can be provided by when. And if that's acceptable to the committee, that would at least allow him, because I was hearing a little hesitation in his voice because he doesn't know what's fully on their plates and he doesn't want to place one more thing on their plate until he knows. If that's sufficient to say, Dr. Gillery, with the hesitation I was reading. Okay.
Can I just ask you, so why don't we wait one more meeting and get the, the motion answered? Is that reasonable, Dr. Gillery? I mean, should, don't we have this information on, we should know who's failing, who's passing at the high school? So I don't understand why we don't track that.
Well, so, um, so absolutely you have it. Um, you know who's failing, you, you know who's failing right now. But you won't be able to look at that for the past three years. To, to do that means people have to go in and actually do a deep query, uh, to, to pull those numbers. So absolutely you can know right now, you know, how many students are failing two or more courses. I'm sure the high school is tracking that and can give that to us tomorrow. Uh, but when you say, I want to compare that to the past three years, that's a whole nother level of work that goes into pulling that because-
But don't we have reports at the end of every year that so many kids didn't pass their core classes? We don't do that?
You, you have that information, but it's, it's a point, and again, in our current data system, that those kids, it looks at where they presently are right now. So for the high school, it would be a matter of probably doing like a transcript pull or transcript report. That again requires some, that's not a report that's just, you click a button and make it happen. You have to write a script for that. You have to then test to verify that it's accurate. Uh, you know, all of those types of things go into it so that we're providing your information that's actually accurate.
Okay. Ms. Darney?
If I could just say, why don't we just go with what's readily available? Because I think the information about how many students are failing two or more core classes is important for us to know. Uh, the S R money goes, it's a three-year thing. We can get the other information, uh, maybe before school starts in the fall or something. I mean, to really kind of look at what have been the depth of losses that our students have experienced. That's where the comparison piece came in for me. Uh, but I'm not in any, I'm not trying to make people drop the projects they're working on to do this, but if we can at least get what our current, how many of our current students are failing two or more classes, which the high school has to know and have that. And then the additional stuff could come later. I'm not expecting people to-
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. We want a roll call or no? Okay. Um, last motion of the night by Ms. Darney, request superintendent develop a whistleblower protection policy to bring before the committee for approval. Seconded by Ms. Martin, Ms. Darney?
I think, your honor, as I mentioned, um, earlier this evening, uh, my personal experience with, uh, staff and people throughout the district, um, has been very different in the last couple of years. The sense that people are afraid, uh, to speak out. And so I know many other government bodies have these kinds of whistleblower protection plans that it, uh, protections. If you speak out about an issue, if you're concerned about what's happening, um, they're, you know, you're not, you're protected. You can't be, um, that can't be held against you. Uh, I don't know what that would look like for us, which is why I would ask the administration to come up with some language that they're comfortable with. Again, we could discuss it as a full committee or send it to subcommittee, uh, whatever people want. But I think that the idea of try, of going through this process of doing this, um, I think it sends a strong message to our community, um, that we want to have a collaborative, inclusive, employment place for our staff, that we value our staff, we value their years of experience, what they've learned firsthand, working with our students. And that this is just saying that. And whether you've experienced it personally or not, if you haven't had somebody say, uh, you know, I'm afraid to speak with you or, you know, just to know that it is happening, that it's happened to me on a number of occasions. Um, my, Ms. Martin has also mentioned experiencing it. Um, I think it's, uh, it's a worthwhile exercise for this committee to take up. Thank you.
And if you don't mind, just, I mean, this has been going on for years too. I've heard this years and years and years. So it's not, I don't think it's directed at, this administration is just saying that overall, um, people feel like they shouldn't speak up because the repercussions may happen. So this has been an ongoing problem and maybe this is a way to address it. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we know if the city has a policy?
Uh, I could ask. I'm not sure if we actually have a-
It would be a question that we could possibly get the answer to that would be, you know, if we follow that policy, why reinvent the wheel? It, it already exists. Um, I think we should, we, we should, we should find that out.
All right. I'll look into it. Ms. Clark?
Thank you. So there's a state law. It's the Massachusetts Whistleblower Law, chapter forty-nine, section one eighty-five. And it exists and it covers all of our employees. It covers even vendors or contractors who would come into our schools. And what it does is, the law itself is a way to report information about suspected illegal, wasteful or unethical activity. That's what whistleblower law covers. It covers then retaliation, um, of an employee for reporting something like that. There's a way to report it. You're reporting it to the state. Um, in my professional experience in human resources, you, um, my experience is you do not want to create policies around laws that currently exist. You can reference the law, but you do not want to write out your own policy. Because what happens is if the law changes, it might get bigger, smaller, whatever may happen. Now your policy is out of line with the law. So I think there could be an opportunity to make mention of the fact that the law exists, point people in the direction of where they could make a report. But I do not support the idea of creating a policy to put into our Lowell Public Schools policy, um, you know, a handbook, because it, it's, it's not necessary. And in fact, it could get us into trouble in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, when I saw this motion, I thought it's a little strange, you know, uh, something that I have been dealing with in the past couple of months, like who rolls the balls. Um, so, uh, Ms. Clark, uh, I think you, uh, your comment is well taken. Uh, I, so I, I think, um, I'm not going to support this motion because of that. Um, uh, so maybe we don't need that, uh, policy in, in the school system. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Dillon?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I agree, um, with Mr. Lay. I just, yeah, I feel like, you know, whistleblower policy, um, is a little bit more than we need. Um, I mean, that's, I feel like that's, um, you know, protecting your, your life and your livelihood when you're, um, talking about larger crimes. Um, you know, so I, I don't, you know, I too have had people that, um, were nervous to reach out, um, not from repercussion from the administration, but from their own union, to be honest. Um, you know, I think a little bit of it is that we're, uh, people, people are, uh, stressed, uh, anxious and there's been a lot going on. And people are afraid to talk, um, against the grain, uh, about every, every subject and every topic right now. Um, uh, so I certainly, I wouldn't, uh, mind having more discussion on the topic. Um, you know, I mean whistleblower protection policy sounds, you know, and, and, and the state law does, you know, cover, I, you know, but it's related to crime. I mean, we're talking crimes, like, you know, high crime. This isn't, um, you know, not just disagreeing with your boss. And, uh, you know, it's also not, um, that, out of the ordinary to expect, uh, like chain of command to be followed, you know, w- when there are such complaints, you know. Um, so, you know, anytime, uh, there are a lot of bosses. I mean, if you break the chain of command under the fight department, it's, you know, not going to be very good for you. Uh, you know, you go to your direct boss and it, it's supposed to go, uh, to the top that way. Um, so I, I guess I'm not going to support this motion, but I wouldn't, um, I, I wouldn't deny further discussion on the whole topic, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. To make a motion, do you want to, um, take a look at the state law? We could maybe accept the state law? Or do you want to address it in a different manner or would?
Well, I, I think I'd like to know if the city has something in place. I, I really wasn't thinking to the level of high crimes, but-
I would, I'll find out, but I would imagine we probably follow the state law.
So maybe just something that references it as Ms. Clark says.
Yeah, we could, we could take a look at it and if you want, you could take a vote to accept it. But maybe I think what you're trying to get at is maybe we need to create a culture where people feel that they can speak up. Um, you know, and again, following the chain of command, follow, speak up and add ideas and comments and criticize and, um, but without repercussion. So. Do you want to do anything with the motion or?
I have no, nope.
You want me to just pull the motion?
Well, it's up to you. I just think by the discussion, it's not going to pass and I would think that-
Okay.
I think what your goal is, is to get people to participate without repercussion, right?
Right. So I, I'm fine with pulling the motion. And I'll, if you can get more information, more, or I can try to get more information-
All right, we'll get more.
If the city has anything.
All right. So motion withdrawn.
So I'll just pull it. Resend it, whatever.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, eight, reports of superintendent's summer school update. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. And we can kind of take these two together. Uh, and first, I did, let's, eight point two is provided for the committee's reference. That's the update on the high school graduation. It's in your packet for, uh, public transparency of the high school graduation this year. Procedural item to provide the committee with that update. You already heard from head of school, Fiatto, directly several weeks ago about the plans. Uh, the update on that one, uh, for the committee's information. As we get additional guidance, we're continuing to update it. Um, Mr. Fiatto did put out word to the community, uh, today about additional tickets for family members to be able to attend this year's event based on the updated guidance. Uh, coming back to eight point one, if I could, uh, Ms. Desmond will share with the committee an update on the summer school program. Uh, again, a planned expansion of the summer school program. We expanded it last year. And prior to Ms. Desmond getting into it, uh, getting into that presentation, I just wanted to share with the committee. Didn't have an opportunity to earlier, um, but the feedback, uh, certainly well accepted. The evaluation process of the superintendent or any chief executive is an evaluation of the organization as a whole. And I do believe that this organization, uh, responded to extreme conditions in an admirable way. And the extraordinary work of staff on all levels showed in the extraordinary progress that this organization was able to achieve within an unprecedented year. Uh, I speak with, uh, superintendents nearly daily within this state and across the country. And I will tell you, uh, the work of this committee, the work of staff at all levels, I would put the work of this organization up against any urban district in the country during these unprecedented times. And because of that work, I believe that our students here will be better off heading into next year having faced this crisis here in Lowell than if they had been anywhere else. We celebrated our retirees and I made the same statement to our retirees earlier. This year in many ways, for many people, uh, felt like far more than one year. This, uh, more was asked of families, uh, parents and educators than ever before. And every step of the way, uh, every person within this community, I believe, rose to the challenge on behalf of our children. And now is a time for us to look forward. We received just, uh, days ago, last week, if you recall, clear guidance from the state that all restrictions are lifted for our schools next year. We are planning to move into a full school opening, a typical school opening next year with the information that we have in front of us. And that process of returning to some sense of normalcy, uh, begins for us with the summer school program that is expanding here this summer. The same guidance is currently in place for summer school program, but Ms. Desmond will share with you what that will look like going into next school year. We still cannot yet quantify the full impact of this pandemic on our children. But I can tell you, uh, I have full confidence, having worked through this year with the more than two thousand staff members that we have across this district, that this district can respond to any challenge that may come its way. And I want to, as we start to move into conversations about moving into greater normalcy, express extraordinary gratitude to every member of this community. The homeschool partnership was redefined this past year. And our families rose to the occasion in a way that I think goes beyond commend- the occasion in a way that I think goes beyond commendable. I use the term admirable, that might not even suffice. This was extraordinary work by everybody who has any involvement in the lives of children, and I think it just can't be said enough. Thank you. Now with that, Ms. Desmond, if you can, Ms. Desmond will go through the summer school update. I wanted to give the committee the update on Lowell High School commencement, so that way you realize the pacing of questions. If there's any questions, that's not a presentation, this is the sole presentation priority, getting into your action items of new business following. Ms. Desmond, with that?
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. So this will just be a brief update of where we are with summer programming. I'd like to thank Dr. Boyd and the committee for allowing us to use ESAR funds to support an expansive summer school program. We are hopeful that we will be able to exceed our registration, which was more than double last, last year from the year prior. So the year prior, we were around fifteen hundred students serviced. Last year, as you recall, because of a lot of the remote summer school programming along with in-person, we were able to service approximately three thousand students. And so we are hoping for approximately four thousand students this year. I will be brief. The summer school sites are listed here. We are utilizing almost every building in the district. Not only are we providing summer school in our elementary and our middle schools, we are providing our Lowell High Jump Start Program for grade, incoming grade nine students. This allows the incoming students to get a jump start on what to expect at the freshman academy and to improve on their academic abilities before starting their freshman year. We are also doing an expansive Lowell High School Credit Recovery Program for all students grades nine through twelve that need to make up credits from this school year. The Engagement Center at the Career Academy is also running a program to support students that may need additional credit recovery and additional academic supports after this year's remote learning situation. And we are running our, our typical IDEA camp. Our IDEA camp is being run before our summer school and after our summer school dates, just so that we're not competing with programming for students. We want students to be able to engage in all of the programming if they so choose. Again, here's some other summer school sites, and then we will be providing our special education program, which is considered E S, E S Y. Just a quick update on where we are with staffing. All of our site administrators have been hired. Our site administrators will oversee the enrollments in their building, attendance, and working with staffing. As of the date this presentation was posted, which was Friday, we needed five additional teachers and approximately ten paraprofessionals. We thank you for approving our new student intern positions. We've hired all of the student interns. Those are college students who are, many of whom went through Lowell Public Schools themselves, who are coming back to work with our students under the guidance of the teachers and site administrators. We're hoping to be able to really understand where our students are at academically and then be able to provide intentional tiered support structures to try to mitigate any below-grade level academics. We also have hired all of the student, all of the social workers, there'll be a social worker in our buildings, clerks, guidance counselors, and nurses. So most of this work is headed by Carolyn Rochelot. She has been our Twenty-First Century and Summer School Program Administrator for many years. And this year, on Saturday, May twenty-second, they held Carolyn Rochelot, Lisa Murphy from HR, Debbie Jarvis from HR, Ruth Holland from HR, and Mary Payne work together to process our new staff for the summer school. So all of our staff were invited to come to the high school and just do all of the HR processes at one time, so that we could make sure that we had people ready to go before the summer school programming started. Enrollment capacity, these are just the numbers that we are, wanted to target for enrollment, but of course, if there is a need, we can increase that enrollment. And again, there's just each site, there's the targeted enrollment that we were hoping for. Special education program is a little different, because again, that program is part of the student's IEP. So if it's in a student's IEP, then they are able to attend. So it's not a target as much as we will meet the needs of all of those students. Curriculum and professional development, we have planned for, before the program starts. Currently, the curriculum coordinators within the Office of Teaching and Learning are working to put all of the resources onto a shared Google Drive, so that all of our teachers have access to plenty of resources to meet the needs of students. Of course, if our teachers have some other resources they want to use, that's fine as well, but we just want to make sure there's plenty before the start of the program. We also have the week of June twenty-first, which is the week before the program starts. We will have PD specific for the interns. We will also have PD specific to our teachers, and our coaches are going to be doing that PD. So they're working with curriculum coordinators right now to plan that PD. Transportation, we've worked with John Dakota in the transportation office. We're still working as student registrations continue to come in. The plan is a half a mile for K-four students and three-quarters of a mile for our five-to-eight students, significantly less than what we do in a standard school year. But again, we've said from the start, we don't want transportation to be a barrier for our students. We will also be continuing the pool testing. We are working, Carolyn Rochelot is working with Mary Ann Bastid, the Health and Safety Coordinator, to ensure that all of those protocols are followed during our summer session as well. And we have worked with our community partners, and so this is just a, a list of some of the partners that we're working with. The Remote Learning Partnership Grant was released, and it really is a grant that allows us to work with partners to be able to provide funding to our partners, which would allow us to provide extended day for our summer school students. So most of, you probably know that our summer school programming is typically three hours of intensive programming. Students have breakfast, and then they also have lunch as part of, of that programming. And then, then the day ends. But with the Remote Learning Partnership Grant, we're able to bus our students to these programs. We're also able to connect with the Lowell Rec Program to then come into our schools after the summer school programs are done and continue on working with those same students to be able to provide exercise and also more hands-on experiential sort of projects. We're hopeful that this will also help support some of the social-emotional needs of our students beyond the, the academic portion of the day. This year, we're also working with the Lowell Police Academy, and so we are, we are providing teachers and summer interns to that program as well for our students that are attending that program at Lowell High School. So some of the next steps are, we are continuing to enroll students, as I mentioned. If anybody's watching, they can go to our website, there's a link there to enroll. We're finalizing the, the materials and supplies for, with our business office for the sites. We're collaborating continuously with our transportation department, because as the enrollments are come, as the registrations are coming in, bus routes have to sometimes change. We are continuing to work with the safety coordinator to follow all protocols. We, masks will be required in our summer school, because the guidance from the governor is that masks will continue to be worn in schools. We will continue to work with the curriculum coordinators on building out rich, robust curriculum material to help support the needs of our students and meet them where they're at currently and move them forward to grade-level standards. We'll continue to collaborate with our community partners to be able to provide full day of summer programming for our families that are working and need that. We will continue to work with HR on the staffing and facilitate the conversations around facilities management, because we are sharing facilities with some of our community partners. That's essential. So we will continue to do that work. I want to thank Carolyn Rochelot for all of her support and hard work on this, and thank you all for being supportive of using our ESAR funds and providing this much-needed resource to our families and students. So thank you.
Mayor, that concludes the presentation. We stand for questions.
Sure, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. Could we go back to the staffing page? My question really is, how many of these have we hired? How many told, you, you've just said that clerks were hired, social workers were hired. Do we have the actual count on those? It doesn't have to be answered now, but I mean, that'd be nice to know.
I'll be happy to provide that for you at the next meeting.
Okay. And on the enrollment capacity, do we expect to reach capacity throughout, or are we hoping that we reach capacity? I think we'd be hoping, but...
We are hoping if we have to exceed it, that's fine as well. It just means that there will be perhaps some more additional staffing that we might have to hire. Some sites are at capacity now, so it really varies depending on the sites. But again, we're, we're really trying to reach all families. We don't want a family to need summer school for various reasons, whether it's social-emotional support, engagement with other students, academic support. We don't want to be, there to be a barrier. So we're, we're happy to support all families, and we will, you know, shift accordingly.
So, so just to be clear, the parents can opt if their school of choice for a summer school program is that capacity? They could go to another school?
I, I would say if, if for some reason the school is at capacity, they should contact me, you know, and, and we can talk about that. If, you know, again, if we need to increase some staffing at a site to be able to meet the needs, we will work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Clark?
I'm, I just wanted to say thank you for all of the work it took to put this program together. I spoke with a teacher the other day who's very excited about this opportunity, both for her students and for herself. I think the idea of making this a, an enrichment program instead of something that's labeled as summer school is very important, and giving teachers opportunities to get creative with the way that they are incorporating in, you know, math and science, you know, different things into lessons makes it fun. I mean, I think this is really going to be a fun program for students, and I hope this is something that we can continue to support in, in future summers, because it is definitely serving a need, you know, especially this year, but I can see how this is a need that happens and is, is happening every year. So why not give our students and our staff opportunity to make great use of, of the summer weeks that we can run this? Food, transportation, I mean, it's great. So, thank you.
For the next three years, has, was the, we do have the, the funding committed for the next three years. So thank you, Ms. Clark, because you are absolutely right. Extending these opportunities, full, robust summer programs, fully robust twilight after-school programs are going to be necessary, not only now, but also into the future, and we have made that commitment for the next three years.
Mr. Dakota?
Just so that people understand, how many element, prior to this year, how many elementary schools had summer programs? How many middle schools had that, say, three years ago, when we, we were at our normal, basically? Just so they can have a sense that this is big.
So that has varied over the years. It's all contingent on whether or not a site has been supported by Twenty-First Century grant money. So in some years, it's been, you know, like, ten sites, and some years, you know, because every year, if there's an opportunity to submit for a new site, we try to do that. And Carolyn Rochelot, our Twenty-First Century Coordinator, does submit the maximum that we are allowed to submit to the state. We, you know, she does a wonderful job, and we're very fortunate, because most of the time, we're awarded the sites that we've requested, for the most part. But, you know, the ESAR funds that you all have approved for summer school has allowed us to provide every single school site to have summer school, and we have not had that in a very long time. So it is, it is great. And again, hopefully, we will be able to meet the needs of all of the students who want to attend, whether it be a social-emotional need or whether it be an academic engagement need.
Thank you. That's just awesome. I, I can't even begin to, to speak from, I'm, I'm sure the teachers are feeling exactly the same way. It's so exciting to see it happen. Thank you.
Mr. Arnie?
Yes, I would like to echo that. I think it's great, and especially given the year we've had. My question is, and I think really the devil is in the details in terms of getting this kids to sign up. And I had, just got a text that the website says the deadline is January first. Well, just double-check it, because we do want to obviously be marketing and promoting the whole program to our families and our students. And if there's, it might just be a typo, but I just had somebody say, do they know the deadline says January one? What is the deadline? You're seeing June?
So originally, the deadline was June first, which was yesterday, and the reason for that is because we want to have a timeline that provides the ability for us to be able to develop the routes for transportation and hire the staff that we know we're going to need based on the enrollments. But again, we've extended that deadline. We've talked to site managers, we've talked to building leaders about extending the deadline in any school that's not full. There are schools that are full, there are sites that are full. So, you know, based on the projected number, that, that is, is the case in a lot of our Twenty-First Century programs, because they're established, they're, they're programs that we have had, and so we have students that have been attending and participating.
So it's extended to...
But again, if there's a site that's, that is not accessible, because, for whatever reason, I would say, you know, people can reach out to me. I'm more than happy to field those calls and work with families if there's a need.
June one is listed on the website currently.
I just said, I used sure, and she said, I looked this afternoon, so it's June first. But it's been, it's going to be extended to what point?
So we are working with schools to see who needs what and meet those needs. But again, you know, we, we've been taking registrations for quite a while now to prepare for this. Again, the Twenty-First Century's sites were already fully funded through that grant, and then the ESAR site, the ESAR funds that you all approved allowed us to extend to all schools. And so, again, just to meet the timelines, because, you know, we want to always make sure that if we're saying to families, this is what we're going to provide you, we want to make sure we provide it. And so we had to timeline out to make sure that staff is hired on time and transportation routes can be established on time. So that's why the June first deadline was there. We do know that based on yesterday, that there are sites that aren't full, and so those are the sites that we're working with to, you know, figure out how we can get more students to know about the program and get them enrolled. And so our building leaders are working with the site managers to make that happen.
That's great, thank you.
But again, if anybody has an issue, a family is out there that has an issue, please email me or call my office.
Any other questions? All right, so, so graduation is Monday, June fourteenth. There's a four P.M. session for House C and D and seven P.M. for House E and B at La Lasha Park. So I need a motion to accept the reports. Eight-one and eight-two is the report of progress by Mr. Dillon, second by Ms. Clark. All in favor, say aye. New business, budget transfer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as we continue through this process of concluding this year and moving into next year, the closeout of our... and moving into next year, the closeout of our books, our budget books, obviously, still are going to require significant work on behalf of the committee. We're providing that recommendation to you for our next step here. At this meeting, well, you'll hear from Ms. Turner for June 16th. We believe, based on the feedback we've received from the committee, as well as the community, that we have a, a plan in place that is going to allow us to leverage every aspect of the cost savings from this year to make sure that we can reinvest in areas that are going to benefit our students now and into the future in areas that have been historically underfunded. Ms. Turner will take the committee through a brief presentation. Nothing within the presentation should seem new to the committee whatsoever. All of these are areas that have, we have been advised by the committee are areas that have been underfunded, that we should look to reinvest as savings become available due to the remote learning environment. Ms. Turner's going to share that with you, as well as the next steps. The recommendation is approval as written, so we can translate these savings into services for our students. Ms. Turner?
It's not. It's not showing up.
Okay, here it is. So as the superintendent said, this is very brief, but being that it is one of the final transfers of the year, we want it to be very transparent with what has happened. So, just a review of the prior March 3rd transfer, which was a large one, it was $8.7 million. We had savings from substitutes, transportation, and salaries, and what we asked you to do at that time was to move money into facilities, technology, and professional development. So that was the last action taken by the school committee. Since then, we've done continuous projections to make sure that we're spending in the ways that we thought we would at that time. The current budget-to-actual analysis shows the following. The professional development line that was funded with $2.5 million with the last approved transfer still has $2.3 million remaining, so we need to redirect those funds. Due to vacancy savings and the timing of hires, the salary accounts still have $2.4 million remaining. So with the above balances, we have $4.7 to reallocate at this time. So some of the mitigating risk associated with spending the savings, to avoid bad bills, we want to keep some of the purchase orders open to ensure that the funds are available to pay for late arrival invoices. But by keeping those purchase orders open, if a bill comes in for less than the purchase order, we may end up having an available balance. I know we don't want to leave a penny on the table, we want to spend it all on the students, but there is a risk that we may end up having a balance at the end. We're trying everything we can to meet the needs of the students before, you know, doing that, but there could be. On the other hand, we don't want to keep money tied up in purchase orders unnecessarily since this means the money will eventually flow to the city rather than the students. Some planned spending may not occur if deadlines are not met, which would mean the year-end surplus would be higher than we anticipate right at this moment. For instance, if capital projects were not already bid, it is nearly impossible for the bid and contract process to complete before the June 4th city deadline for spending. So Friday is the deadline for the city to enter purchase orders. We have, whatever you approve tonight, we have to dra, the school's committee secretary has to draft the minutes, then send it to City Hall before they'll actually do the transfer. So that's giving us two days to get the minutes done, the transfer done, and then enter all the purchase orders. So if things haven't been done, like the, with the facilities planted, you know, the $1.6 million, if something, if the scope wasn't done, if it wasn't bid yet, things like that, it will not happen this year because it won't, you know, you can't go out to bid and then get it back by Friday. So what we would do is let those funds flow into the SPED stabilization account that we do have with the city, and then use less of our out-of-district tuition next year and fund those construction projects at that point. These funds would flow into a surplus account that would flow to the city unless it is identified before the June 16th proposed date of voting for moving available funds into the SPED stabilization account. I'll get more into the SPED stabilization as we go through. So, the recommended uses of savings for this $4.7 million that's coming from professional development and salaries would be the following. We can replenish the circuit breaker revolving account through expense transfers that we've done, you know, used this year. So we'll continue on that trajectory where we have very full revolving accounts. We're going, and we did an internal transfer to move funds into the supply account before, just so you understand what, what an internal transfer means, I have to come to you whenever we're making a transfer from one DOE function code to another. So if we, if we want to move money from instruction to pupil services, I have to come in front of you and get your permission. But what the rules, if I'm moving something from instruction to instruction, it does not require the school committee's approval because it's staying within the same type of cost. So one internal transfer that has already occurred this week, we moved $1 million from all of the instructional cost line items and put it into an instructional supply account and did what you asked us to do last time, which was to invest in music equipment, music supplies, art supplies, including visual art technology for the visual art classrooms. We invested in the physical education equipment, uniforms, band equipment, and it, we had to get all the quotes. We couldn't go out to bid, so we had to make sure that we went on the state contract list to get all of this, but I'm happy to say that Mr. Veso was very, very helpful and did get all of those in, and all of the phys ed teachers stepped to the plate and gave us orders for all of their schools to have a replenish, they replenished their physical ed equipment. Some of them were using equipment from 10, 15 years ago, so this was really helpful. So that was one way of the revolving account and the internal transfer. Those are two ways we wanted to use the $4.7 million that you will not see on the transfer in the memo that you received this week. What you did see on the memo, the memo transfer was moving money into instructional tech hardware, $1.5 million, which that's trying to replenish the Chromebooks, as we said that we want to do each year going forward so that we can continue with the one-to-one device initiative. We also wanted to provide Chromebooks to paraprofessionals so that they have a device. The other areas that we would like to move money into is SPED transportation. Now, I wanted to point this out. If you look at the first page of the presentation, you see that my original transfer from March 3rd asked us to move money from SPED transportation, and now we're moving it back. This is why a monthly projection is so important, because I give you a projection at a point in time. In March, we thought that we were, you know, we were going to have $2.1 million left over in SPED transportation because that was what was happening at that point. But after we went back to school, a few students were at it, and now we need to put $200,000 back into that account for special ed transportation. And again, we're not, this doesn't worry us because we know that we watch the accounts monthly to see the trajectory. The other account that we wanted to transfer into is sick leave buyback, that's $359,000. Retirees ended up coming in, a lot of people put their intent to retire in at the end of the year rather than during the year. Employee health insurance, after we started to rehire a lot of people, the insurance went up by $267,000. And lastly, the capital improvement account, we wanted to fund that to cover the playgrounds that we've discussed. So after doing this transfer, which is included in your memo, after this, things could change from between now and our June 16th meeting. We may get a purchase order that comes, I mean, an invoice that comes in lower than what the purchase order expected. The shipping and handling could be lower, things like that. So what we're suggesting is that you vote to accept this transfer now so that we can get the spending done, hopefully by Friday. Cheryl Wright, the interim auditor, did say that she will extend that a little bit just so that we can get these, you know, get the transfer done and then get the spending done. But after that, I'll watch the accounts closely, and on June 16th, I'll bring another transfer to you, and instead of losing that money, we can vote to put it into the SPED stabilization, which will then go in front of the City Council on June 22nd, and this will help us offset any risk we have with increased out-of-district costs for next year. And if the costs don't increase and the money is in the SPED stabilization, we could spend less on our out-of-district costs that we have budgeted for next year. We could move some of that budgeted money into other line items like the facilities that we weren't able to do this year. So it's just a matter of fund management. So these are, these are our suggestions, and they were based upon what you had said that you wanted to prioritize for the remainder of this year.
If I could emphasize before we fill questions, the overplanning throughout the course of this year has allowed us now to take advantage of opportunities in very short windows, which is why I say that none of this stuff should look as surprises to the committee. All of this is discussed. Now's the opportunity to make the decision at this point. You see, the decisions are already lined up for you on June 16th. Those plans have already been in place. These are underfunded areas of historic demand from our community and our schools. I think Mr. Dakota brought up the band uniforms. Mayor and Committee Member Dillon, you brought up the notion of athletic uniforms. All of this has been historic demand. Now's an opportunity that we can invest. It is the time now, we believe, for the committee to make this, this transfer. You have one more in front of you on June 16th. The recommendation's approval as written. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We stand for questions.
Thank you. Did you have a question, Ms. Arty?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, so if we send the money to the city in the suspense account, you're saying we have access to it, again, right? We're not going to...
I want to make sure we clarify language. Ms. Turner was referring to the special education stabilization account, which is, which...
Okay. But it's still ours because we have lost money to the city in the past. And I know, and you did mention this, we had, we put $1.6 million in facility upgrades, but we had way more on that wish list. But you're saying now, if it's not been done, we can't spend it later. It's going to go into this special education stabilization account that we'll still have access to.
Right. But we do have to get City Council, we will still have to get City Council approval when we need the money, but it will, it is specified for schools in special ed. So it can offset our, we do have a $10 million a year out-of-district special ed cost. As a matter of fact, the director of special ed wanted to increase the out-of-district account just knowing that because of a lot of our classes with the, you know, autism, things like that, a lot of, or the, what did they, what did they call it? The, what, just the special needs classrooms, they're, a lot of them are at full capacity, so if that's the case, we may end up having to send more students out of district, which would increase the cost. But we were, we were felt as though we had plenty of money in the circuit breaker to mitigate that risk and not increase that and cut elsewhere. So this special ed out-of-district cost, I mean, account with the city would further help us with those costs. And I, I can't imagine that they could take it from us because it is for the students and it's for the special education students, so I feel as though this is our last option. We've done everything we could to bring forward all of the moving parts, the money. If we, now that we're here with this final transfer, we can do another transfer, but we don't have any more time to spend money because now is the deadline for spending, so it's really living within that. So the only thing we can do is transfer it into SPED stabilization or lose it.
And I, I think it's also important to add is that within the extreme conditions of this year, we've relied on partnerships like never before, and I do want to recognize the partnership with our city partners. This is going to be another area where we have to continue to partner. I have conversations with the manager and the mayor, sometimes more often than I have conversations with my wife because of the amount of connection and cohesiveness that we need between both entities. So here, what we'll do is we're going to make sure that we continue to invest in the district strategic goal, strategic plan, while we make sure we follow all the timelines available. But you heard Ms. Turner reference, you know, the bid process, that's a process we work in partnership with the city. The facilities are a continuous partnership with the city. The city owns the facilities. We work as, you know, the, the only tenant of the building, but yet the facilities themselves, according to state law, is a property of the city, so any improvement there is a partnership we'll continue to work across. What this allows is for us to invest now in these areas. The special education stabilization provides additional flexibility in another fund that will be at the school committee's disposal, but it has different parameters that guide it. You should anticipate at the next meeting, that would be the transfer that would go in, and at that time, if Ms. Turner can share with the committee the full parameters of what that account means, how it's available to the committee, and what decisions you need to make in order to access those funds into the future. I do think it's important to recognize that often, we're sharing with you the volatility of these out-of-district costs, and this provides another mechanism to further mitigate risk in those forecasts. So that's a decision for June 16th. The decision here before you now is to make sure that we can get these investments made. I know there's a lot of excitement in the community around these playgrounds, an opportunity to partner with Ms. Doherty on, on that as the facilities chair, and thank you for that work, Ms. Doherty, on the playgrounds. There's, I think there's a lot of, a lot of things to be excited about as we invest, and I want to make sure that it's clear here, these are investments in areas of strategic goal, that we knew the investments would be coming up at this time. This is not unplanned spending. It's very much planned spending according to priorities and according to timeline. This is the timeline that's before the committee today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Dakota?
If there aren't any other questions, I've moved that we accept this budget transfer as written.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Ms. Clark. Did you have a question? Okay. Did you have a question? No.
I guess just to comment, good work, Ms. Turner, and to the administration targeting, you know, the areas and making quick work of getting that money and putting it to good use. So I just wanted a second, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call?
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Professional development, professional personnel, members of the United, teachers at Lowell hereby donate 13 sick days, sick leave days to Mariana Carasso McCall School Paraprofessional. Any questions? Roll call? Oh, question? Okay. Motion by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call?
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Anything else? Mr. Lay? Motion adjourned by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Thank you.